Can we get in the meeting with a moment of silence? Announce that the meeting is being recorded and televised by WHCA. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry. All those in favor? I'd like a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Public forum, now's the time for anybody to speak on, who wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda. Approval of meeting minutes, open session, August 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Sir, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Chairman's report? I have none for today. Scheduled events, 7:05 PM, well, it's 7:03. So why don't we recognize a couple of people first, and then we'll go to that. I'd like to recognize the retirement of Sergeant Peter Aiken for the proclamation. If I may read it. "Peter E. Aiken has retired from the position of sergeant effective August 8th, 2023, having served the town for approximately 25 years. And whereas Peter Aiken has served the town honorably, faithfully, efficiently, and with dedication as an auxiliary police officer from 1992 to 1995, then by becoming a full-time patrolman in 2001, before assuming the role of sergeant in 2019, all the while carrying out his duties in a manner that is a credit not only to himself but to the town of Whitman as well. And whereas the valued services and untiring devotion of Peter Aiken has not gone unnoticed or unappreciated, and he will be sincerely missed by his retirement. And whereas the Board of Selectmen on behalf of a grateful community does hereby commend Peter E. Aiken for services rendered to the town. And whereas the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the citizens of the town of Whitman extends heartfelt gratitude to Peter E. Aiken and wishes him many years of good health and happiness in his retirement and any future endeavors he wishes to pursue. We here to set our hands in town seal this 22nd day of August 2023 at Whitman, Mass. And it's signed by the selectmen." Would you like to present this proclamation? Mary Beth, can you get me an agenda? I'll get mine downstairs. You want to add something, Chief?
I do. I just want to add that he's, once again, he's not going very far.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Enjoy.
Going to be doing roadwork for us as a special officer. So he'll be available for details, and we won't forget what he looks like. He's already done a couple like that. And he cleans up nice, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And the second proclamation I'd like to read is for recognizing the retirement of Officer Christopher Lee. Whereas Christopher L. Lee has retired from the position of patrolman effective July 21st, 2023, having served the town for more than 22 years. And whereas Christopher Lee has served the town honorably, faithfully, efficiently, and with dedication, beginning as an auxiliary police officer in 1998, then by becoming a full-time patrolman in 2001, as well as holding the position of school resource officer for many years, and safety officer since 2012, all the while carrying out his duties in a manner that is a credit not only to himself but to the town of Whitman as well. And whereas the valued services and untiring devotion of Christopher L. Lee has not gone unnoticed or unappreciated, and he will be sincerely missed by his retirement. And whereas the Board of Selectmen on behalf of a grateful community does hereby commend Christopher L. Lee for services rendered to the town. And whereas the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the citizens of the town of Whitman extends heartfelt gratitude to Christopher L. Lee and wishes him many years of good health and happiness in his retirement and any future endeavors he wishes to pursue. We here on to set our hands in town seal this 22nd day of August 2023 at Whitman, Mass. It's been assigned by the board."
All right, Chris.
We're going to get pictures, huh?
Want to do one? Call us for one. Thank you.
He's always looking for a front page.
Congratulations again.
Thanks so much.
And again, as I mentioned, at the last meeting, Selectmen's meeting, Officer Lee is also going to not go too far. So we appreciate their assistance in helping us out on road jobs and details and everything else. Thanks, Chris.
And it has reached 7, well, actually, it's reached 7:07. We have a public meeting with respect to the application of Memorial Field Association Incorporated, doing business as American Legion Post Number 22, for a change of DBA in connection with the alcohol club liquor license on the premises located at 33 Legion Parkway. Give me a motion. Mary Beth, would you like to, well, could I have a motion? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Okay. Mary Beth, would you like to say something about it?
I believe that somebody would like to speak on this issue, basically.
I'm Jim Murphy from the Legion. The Alcohol Beverage Control Commission is the only entity that has us as a DBA. Technically, the American Legion is not in the business of own and buy, so that's why you have to have a separate corporation. So like our bank statements, the IRS, two different tax ID numbers, our W9s, liquor liability policy is just in Memorial Field Association, Inc. So we just want to make it clear, we just, you know, we want to draw up the DBA. That's all we're asking.
Thank you very much.
Kind of let it slide, the members, you know, wanted me to bring it up before the town, that's all.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
No.
Mary Beth alone?
Done.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda. I'd like a motion to recognize suicide prevention month.
So moved.
For the proclamation.
So moved.
Sir. Second.
Second. I'll have to read the proclamation now. National Suicide Prevention Month, September 2023, proclamation for the town of Whitman. Whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of all deaths in the United States, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 20 to 34, and the third leading cause of death in our youth, ages 10 to 19. Whereas the United States, one person completes suicide every 14 minutes. Whereas it is estimated that 5 million people in the United States are survivors of suicide loss. Whereas an increase in the overall suicide rate in our country was seen in 2019, representing a change in the recent pattern of stability or slight declines, of slight declines. Whereas suicide is a community problem, and thus there must be a community response through various initiatives to reduce suicidal behaviors. Whereas the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through education, awareness, and action, urge that we as a community, number one, recognize suicide as a national, state, and Whitman public health problem, and declare suicide prevention to be a Plymouth County priority. Two, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities. And three, encourage local initiatives based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention that will, A, develop and implement strategies to reduce stigma associated with being a consumer of mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services. B, develop and implement community-based suicide prevention programs and suicide bereavement support services. C, implement training for the recognition of at-risk behavior and for delivery of the effective treatment. D, increase access to and community linkages with mental health and substance abuse in the entertainment news media. Whereas a great many suicides are preventable, therefore be resolved that we, the Whitman Board of Selectmen, who hereby designate September 2023, which overlaps World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10th, as National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Whitman, Massachusetts. And we had a motion, didn't we?
Yes.
All those in favor? Call for promotionalists for the rank of sergeant from civil service. Chief.
Good evening. With the recent retirement of Sergeant Peter Aiken, we have an opening within the department to promote one of the patrolmen to sergeant, and that's my request, based on our needs.
Can I have a motion to call for that list?
I will make that motion.
Sir, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Eric Dresser would like to talk about Comcast license renewal process. Eric.
Excuse me, can I put a little slide up there for everybody? So I'm Eric Dresser, the executive director of Whitman Hansen Community Access. And what you're looking at there is just the homepage of our website. I came in tonight to talk about our efforts so far. We've just recently kicked off the process of doing the every 10 years cable license renewal. So we are working with an attorney. By we, I mean Kathy Keefe, myself. We're working with attorney Bill Solomon, who I believe you guys all approved to enter an agreement with and start doing that work. So we've had our preliminary meeting. Went for about an hour and 15 minutes, pretty detailed. So I'm here, I'm an open book if there's any questions that you all have about that process. We're going to continue to have meetings. But I wanted to kind of come in and talk a little bit tonight about that process and about what's going to be needed as we go forward. The cable license, our existing license runs from June of 2014 through June of 2024. So we're in the final year of that license. Told by our attorney, Bill Solomon, that that is fine, we're not really in red zone or anything like that in terms of our timing. But we are going to kind of continue to move the ball downfield and to do the steps that we need to do. The first and probably most important of those steps is to hold what's called an ascertainment hearing for the community to come in and to speak about the benefits that they've received of the program. And also any room for feedback or changes or things that they might like to see in the new cable license. So we pitched out a few dates, looking at when you all would not be meeting to possibly use a Tuesday night, because our preference would be to have that meeting at a time that you'll all be available to come. So we're looking at the 19th of September or the 3rd of October, I think, are the dates that we're looking at. We do also have the 26th of September. I know I would have to move some things around on my side. So those are the three dates we're looking at. Between now and then, we're also, we'd like to have like a few minutes for myself to appear with the department heads to talk a little bit about some of the support we could get from them, and again, some feedback about how we might be able to better serve them in the next tenure term of the contract, or cable license, I should say. And so I just wanted to put this page up. This is a recently revived slider on the front page of our website. So anybody who would like more information on this entire process and to see our progress to date from the Hanson side, because we did start this process in Hanson about February, we had that ascertainment hearing. So if you click into this slider, you will see more information come up about what we have ahead of us in terms of the ascertainment hearing. You'll see some examples of, you know, around town, obviously, always the media folks, we love to put pictures up on screen, a little description of the process and how you can help. So we're going to be starting the press, the marketing press, right away, starting tonight, looking for people to come and join us at the Whitman Cable License Ascertainment Hearing, looking for people who can't come in person to submit a written testimonial, which they can do right from link on this page. And anybody who would rather do a video version of that, we can set up a Zoom meeting or come down to the studio, we can capture that there. So the next thing that we'll do, and the next thing I'd like to update on this page, is to put in a save the date. So if you actually go up here and you click in the second paragraph here about Hanson's ascertainment hearing back in February, you'll see an example of some of the marketing collateral that we made up, we made of this little save the date here that we put up around the community in Hanson last year in January and February. I brought a big stack of those to the department head meeting. And you can actually watch our ascertainment hearing from Hanson if you were so inclined right there. Down on the left here, we've got a handful of letters of support that we already collected from our work in February. The, as I mentioned, the submission window for that is still open. Anybody who wants to support from the Whitman side, from the Hanson side, and of course, as you all know, our content goes out over the entire world. So if there's somebody that benefits from watching our programming in Florida, we'll take, we'll take whomever, wherever they are. So I just wanted to kind of share those two pages, the information that's in that slider, to be able to find all that and tell you a little bit about the background. I didn't bring you copies of the cable license because it's, I think, over 100 pages, and only a little bit of it really deals with cable. A lot of it also deals with the infrastructure of how it passes through town. So I just wanted to kind of mention the process, and we were just going to kind of funnel it through the administrative offices downstairs, but in case you had any questions about the process, with Kathy being sort of new to the process, I thought I'd come in and explain the process and then be here for any questions you might have about it.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone have any questions of Eric at this point? So you're looking for a date, basically, to have the ascertainment meeting?
Yeah. Be looking at, my preference would probably be if we could do that October date because it would give us more time for the department heads.
I think October 3rd would be, would be a good date. How about the rest of you?
Yeah.
October 3rd?
And so we'll make up a version of that, save the date, with some Whitman-centric images, and we'll change the dates, and we'll have a page like this, as a landing page for information for people, a place that they can come. And I actually think that on the previous page, there was a spot here to RSVP, so that we know who's coming ahead of time, we can already kind of, you know, maybe even have all of those stories, sort of create a narrative and things like that. And again, just, just talk about how, you know, how we've been helpful and how we can be more helpful in the next 10 years.
Thank you. Okay, so October 3rd.
We're good.
Anyone? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, so now it makes sense to set the meeting schedule for September. Anyone have any suggestions?
I will be away the 19th, so I can't do that one.
Okay. And this is going to be tough. Yes, Mary Beth, do you have some thoughts?
Well, I was thinking, I think two weeks would be September 5th, which is the Tuesday, the day after Labor Day. So the next week would be the 12th. That might be a great time.
Okay, the 12th? So we'll start off with the 12th. I was going to have trouble getting here on the 19th, too, because they have an appointment in town in the afternoon. So I'm cool with you on that.
That's fine. I'll be in Minnesota, so I'm definitely not making it.
Okay. The 20, if we need another meeting in September, the 26th is available, but I won't be. I have a celebration of life for someone who has passed away that happens that night, so I will not be able to be here that night.
And we may need a second one in September.
If we need a second one, we have a very reliable vice chair who could handle the duties that night.
26th?
Yeah. So you want to, want to say the 26th? Okay. So we'll be meeting on the 12th and the 26th.
Okay.
All business. Mary Beth is going to talk about the Whitman Middle School Project?
Yes. So the Whitman Middle School Building Committee met last Tuesday, August 15th, to discuss the most recent updates regarding the project. The new building, if we were to do the, I mean, the new building construction, the total building project actually increased by over $7 million, from 127 million to 135 million. However, the town's portion, after the estimated MSBA reimbursements, increased by $17 million from 72 million to 90 million, which is a 26% increase. So I ran some numbers, and the impact of this new cost to taxpayers is approximately $1,494.01 for the first year of debt. This figure is based on a level principal 30-year debt schedule calculated at the district's anticipated borrowing rate of 5.5%. This impact amount was based on an average home valuation for a single-family home valued at $420,530 as of today. Debt payments based on a level principal debt schedule decrease each year over the 30-year term, with the average debt payment being $1,017.59. The difference in using a level debt service schedule as opposed to a level principal debt service schedule saves the town over $19 million on this new construction borrowing option. So that would be the option that I would say the town would want to use. If the borrowing is staggered over two or three years based on the projected cash flow, the interest rate used in the calculation would of course be different, and therefore the impact to the taxpayers would also be different. If the town did a base repair option, just as a comparison, the base repair option is now estimated at $60,358,000. The impact of this revised estimate to taxpayers is approximately $1,001.96 in the first year of debt. This figure again is based on the same level principal 30-year debt schedule calculated at the 5.5% and again was based on the same average home valuation of $420,530. The debt payments again on a level principal schedule decrease from the first year down to the 30th year, and the average debt payment over the 30 years would be $682.38. The difference in using a level debt service schedule as opposed to a level principal service debt schedule for a repair option saves the town over $12 million in interest. Again, that would be the level principal, I would think, would be the way to go for the town. And again, this is strictly an estimate based on the district's borrowing of the whole amount in one bond issue. Both scenarios that I set here for impacts would be if the district were to borrow the full amount instead of borrowing it in, say, two or three bond issues. Let's see. And of course, with a base repair option, the, well, for new construction, it would be 30 years, because 20 years would just be huge. The town wouldn't be able to handle that, I don't feel. So that 30-year option is the only way I see that we should go. But as far as the base repair, it's based on the useful life, and this option would not be considered a renovation. It would be considered, you know, a repair of the building. And so the question is, what would the useful life be? And you're allowed to extend your debt schedule based on the useful life. So what the figure that I gave here for a repaired debt amount for the impact of $1,0196 in the first year is based on a 30-year debt schedule. If it were determined that it's a 20-year useful life, of course, that payment would be even higher. The Whitman Building School Committee, though, has posted a meeting for this coming Monday, August 28th, to review and revisit the Whitman Middle School Building Project and the options available to us. So we will know a lot more, I would think, after our meeting Monday evening. So I just want to update you on the most recent changes.
Okay. Thank you. That's based upon last week's meeting?
Last week's meeting. And now there's been a meeting called, I received the agenda today, for Monday evening, and we'll take a look at everything then.
At which point, all of this could change?
Absolutely.
Could. Depending on what happens at that meeting?
Depending on how the committee vote, what options they put forth, you know, what's determined in that meeting.
I'd like to recognize Fred, who's the chairperson of that committee, to see if he can shed a little light on Monday's, Monday night's meeting.
The chair members of the board, Fred Small, 87, Hilltop Road, and the chairman of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. The numbers we were given for the new project originally was 67-point-something million to 72-point-something million. When we saw the $89 million figure, it was quite startling. And we didn't receive those numbers until very late before our meeting. So to have an opportunity to digest and have questions ready and be able to try and comprehend and understand the difference in the delta, you know, because you're talking, if you want to say it was 67 million, now you're talking over $20 million difference. When looking at everything, I feel the whole committee needs to sit down, have an understanding of why the numbers changed. Why is something so drastically different? And we've asked our project engineers and our architects, you know, to join us Monday. We'll discuss everything on the table. And if it's determined by the committee to see if we want to seek another option, if there's another option available, then that'll be a committee decision, so things may change. You know, that's sort of where it is right now.
We might get a more optimistic report from Mary Beth?
Correct.
After Monday's meeting?
Correct. You know, so we, we need to, you know, we all need to understand everything ourselves and make a very good decision based upon the information given to us. And also try and go back and understand where the information that was given to us prior, why is there such a discrepancy? I know inflation, and I know costs have increased, but $20 million is quite a bit. The entire project's only a $7 million difference, and I say only, a 20 million, you know, directly to us.
Thank you, Fred. I'm glad you're calling another meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't know if anyone has any questions?
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, it's Fred.
So just to clarify, just last week, you learned that instead of us borrowing about 67 million, we'll likely have to borrow 90 million?
That's correct. We found that out Tuesday.
Just found that out Tuesday. So that's obviously a concern.
That was prior to our vote for the schematic design phase. You know, so it was.
Could you, if you could just explain what the vote for the schematic design phase was?
So that is to send all the information to MSBA, the final step in the road of being able to go to the voters, requesting approval at special town meeting in October, and then requesting approval at a ballot vote. So now we're, bang, getting into our construction phase. Schematic design is a little bit more intense than the preliminary that we have submitted, but, you know, now it's getting real, so to speak.
When do you have to make a decision by?
Well, they're supposed to have the paperwork in by the 31st of August. So we can perhaps ask MSBA for a delay. Are going to be some options hopefully on the table for us. And that's what Monday meeting is, Monday's meeting is to determine. What options do we have?
Dan?
Yes, Dan.
Has the MSBA, has the state reimbursement, have they dropped their percentage?
No. No.
So what is the percentage?
So, I mean, everything, you know, to the best of my knowledge, is pretty much the same. They changed things back at the end of '22, where they actually allowed more money per square foot.
You know, so. Increase in costs and things, yeah?
You know, to reduce costs for, you know, cities and towns. We're trying to understand why, if that occurred, what's happened.
Would they consider to increase again?
It may happen. I don't know if our project, where our project will be in a pipeline, if they would consider, you know, once they, if they raise something, I don't know if they would consider going back to our project or not. You know, the legislator, the legislature did put aside some money for MSBA in this year's budget. We don't qualify for any of it, I believe, and we've got our project manager here, but I believe that was for prior years, that they're offering some relief?
Correct. Projects that were during the COVID period.
During the COVID period, so they're not doing anything for us.
Thank you, Fred. Good luck, good luck, Monday.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the town administrator's report. You been busy, Mary Beth?
Been very busy. I have one item that I do want to mention. The deadline to license your dogs, just a reminder, is August 31st. After that, the town clerk will add a $25 late fee, which will be imposed for all unpaid licenses. So that's the only item I want to add today.
We see nothing else. We need to go into executive session. We have two of them. And it's exactly 7:30. Incredible. This is pursuant to a mass general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, exception one, to discuss the physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of police department employee. And then after that, we have an executive session pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30A, 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Whitman Police Union, Mass Cop Local 494. If an open. Union, Mass. Cop Local 494, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Is there a motion to go in?
So moved.
Second.
The Voice Folks?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. We have an executive session, we'll return an open session only to adjourn.